The July 14 Williamsburg City Council meeting will come to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Friling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster. Ramsey.
Here.
First order of business are the meeting minutes from June 6 and June 9, 2016. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the meeting, the minutes from June 6 and June 9, 2016.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
I abstain.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Staying.
Today, we have no matters of special privilege, so that takes us to the public hearings. Our first public hearing today is PCR 16-006, Walsingham Academy's request for a special use permit. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Friling and members of council, Walsingham Academy is requesting a special use permit to construct two small additions at the school on Jamestown Road. The red stars on this slide indicate the approximate location of the two additions. Just got one. That's what happened, he went too far. Sorry. This site plan showing, shows the proposed location of the additions highlighted in red. One is a small deck addition to the upper school adjacent to the library shown on this slide to, as support, to support library activities. This slide indicates the covered deck addition to the lower school adjacent to the kindergarten This shows the lower school addition. No additional classrooms are proposed for either location. The applicant proposes to construct the lower school deck in 2016 with the upper school deck following in the summer of 2017. Since 1991, when schools required a special use permit, there have been several additions to Walsingham Academy requiring a special use permit as noted in my memo. The Architectural Review Board granted conceptual approval for the upper school deck and final approval for the lower school covered deck in May. This proposal is consistent with the 2013 comp plan, which shows the property as public and semi-public land use and with the intent of the RS1 zoning district. The two small additions are compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and are designed and landscaped to complement the existing school buildings. Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 15. Other than the applicant, no one spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommended to City Council by a vote of 6-0 that the special use permit be approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Jeff Bearer, the architect representing the school and other school representatives are present if you have any questions of them.
Are there any questions for Ms. Murphy from council? Ms. Murphy, do we have information on what the general use of the decks will be for?
Basically, it's an extension of the library use so that they can sit out and read books and do that type of use. And for the lower school, it's for the kindergarten classroom to come out and have a covered area to play in if the weather is inclement.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and come back to council for your comments.
Just, no, no comments as to the application, just happy to support Walsingham growing and becoming a more dynamic institution in the city.
I have no comments.
No, it strikes me that anything that we can do to support the educational experience of young minds in the community and if the folks at Walsingham feel that this is in their best interests, as I do, then I'm happy to support it.
Happy to support this proposal.
Yeah, I, by everything I've heard from neighbors in the communities, Walsingham has been a great neighbor and clearly it's another educational asset to this community. Not only that, the decks that we're talking about are generally well shielded from the surrounding homes and it's hard to imagine a less intensive use than an outdoor reading area as an extension of a library. So granted, the playing outside might generate a little more noise, but seems like a wonderful use. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve PCR 16-006, request for special use permit by Walsingham Academy.
Second.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
That takes us to PCR 16-007, Discount Tire Company request for a special use permit. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Friling and members of council, Discount Tire is requesting a special use permit for a new tire store at 1508 Richmond Road. The applicant proposes to sell and service tires and wheels with all work being performed inside the building. No other mechanical work will be performed at this location. This site is located in the corridor protection district and the Architecture Review Board approved the design at their May 24 meeting. The proposal, site meets all basic city zoning requirements and contains approximately 35% open space. Two entrances to the parcel are proposed from a shared driveway that runs through the property from Richmond Road to Ironbound Road. This development is compatible with the new Aldi store and other developments along Richmond Road. It is adequately served by public services and will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any features of ecological, scenic, or historic importance. It is designed and sited to be, to complement adjacent properties and uses. The applicant projects 3.5 million in sales and 10 new jobs. The use helps diversifies the types of uses in this corridor and the city. Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 15. Other than the applicant's attorney, no one spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommended to City Council by a vote of 4-1-1 that the special use permit be approved to allow Discount Tire to locate at 1508 Richmond Road with the two conditions recommended by staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant's attorney, Lori Schweller, is present and will be providing additional business and specific information about the company during her presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Murphy? With that, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Lori Schweller. Is it, is this the appropriate time for me to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Could you possibly, is, is it for her to?
Big market plan for to be.
Okay, please.
She has a presentation.
Okay, thank you. If I may, I'd like to give a brief presentation in support of the application for a special use permit. Just to tell you a little bit about the company, Discount Tire is the nation's largest independent retailer of tires and wheels. First opened in 1960, currently have 926 stores in 31 states. Virginia is the new outreach and we're planning about 10 stores, most of which are in the Richmond area and Hampton Road. So Williamsburg will be one of the, one of the first in Rich, in Virginia. Company is based in Daytona. It's privately held and has a very good reputation among the business community and its customers. It's very much customer oriented. I know all businesses say that, but it has some unusual benefits for the community. All drivers are considered customers and so Discount Tire offers free air pressure checks and rotations and repairs whether or not your tires are purchased at Discount Tire. And that's a way to gain new customers and the community. So last year alone, Discount Tire performed 5 million flat repairs and not all of those, of course, were tires bought at Discount Tire. The only thing they do is sell tires and wheels. It is a retail store. There's no repair done other than repairing tires and replacing tires. The location proposed is, of course, at the Aldi Shopping Center on Richmond Road. This is a subdivision plot excerpt just to show you that this is one of three parcels in a subdivision and the, the two out parcels on Richmond Road have the benefit of the access easement over the Aldi parcel. You can see that under a declaration recorded in the land records. This is the site plan that the ARB reviewed and approved. One of the changes requested was the jet out on the, on the Richmond roadside to shield, make it look a little bit more pedestrian friendly on the, on the Richmond roadside. These are the elevations. Most discount store, tire stores are approximately 7,000 square feet and they have very similar look, but they're very flexible and worked with the BAR to get the, the look that you need for Richmond Road. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission about the appearance of Discount Tire Store on this corridor and so we thought it would be beneficial to go ahead and prepare preliminary landscaping plan, just to give you a sense of how much green space there is on this lot. This lot is about an acre and a quarter and 35% green space, even though only 25% is required. So you can see it's a pretty robust landscaping plan. Discount Tire expects to bring 10 new jobs to Williamsburg. They estimate they will generate 3.5 million in sales. As a courtesy to their employees, they are only open during the daytime and on Saturdays, they're closed on Sundays. Again, all work is performed in the store, so they're not going to have any hazardous waste on site or in the parking lot. Tires are in an area shielded on the parking lot and they're picked up by a recycling service, a nationwide recycling service. Had a question from Mr. Zhang before the hearing. Wanted to know how they estimate the 3.5 million in sales? And this has to do, it sort of dovetails with how Discount Tire selected Williamsburg and in particular this Richmond Road location to request this special use permit. They actually, there's a gentleman in the office who has a proprietary algorithm to analyze the economic data of the area. That's not unusual, but he obtains data from Department of Transportation about how many cars per household you have. What's the average income per household? How many miles are those cars driven? You know, how many tires do we expect to sell to those households? So the data all has to do with the Williamsburg community. I think one of the questions was, is this targeted toward tourists on their way to Colonial Williamsburg? It's a fantastic business for tourists who are in Williamsburg who need tire repair, but the analysis is done of the Williamsburg community, first looking at five mile area and then a three mile and then honing in on a one to two mile area. The broker then looks at parcels that would be appropriate, that we like at least an acre and on a retail corridor, because this is a retail store and, and you know, of course, the right price and entrance features. As to zoning, of course, this is the B2 zoning district, which is for uses that are geared toward the automobile. This particular use, motor vehicle sales and service establishments, is permitted only with a special use permit. I should note, however, that service stations, which do include oil and gas and vehicle repair, are permitted by right in this district. There's one next door, in fact. So we do meet all the requirements of the zoning for the B2 district. Your special use permit criteria, of course, takes into consideration the comprehensive plan and we believe that this proposal is in harmony with your comprehensive plan. This is in the corridor commercial land use, which B2 corridor Business District implements and the land in this corridor is to be available for commercial development with minimal residential development. This particular parcel, the Aldi parcel, is called out, in fact, as a primary for redevelopment on this corridor. Second, special use permit criteria is that it's in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning district. And again, the purpose of the B2 zoning district is for commercial and service uses primarily oriented toward the automobile. And the third criteria is for harmony with the adjacent properties. As you know, along this corridor, you have hotels, restaurants, even other service centers, tire sellers, so it's very much in harmony with existing uses. And finally, the proposed use needs to be adequately served by infrastructure, streets and so on, won't cause any damage to ecological or historic resources, and is designed and sited and landscaped so that it is in harmony with the adjacent properties. So in short, we believe that this proposal is in, does comport with the objectives of your comprehensive plan, is in line with the zoning ordinance, and we'd like to request your approval of our application. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schweller. Are there any questions?
Ms. Schweller, thank you for coming. Can you, I know you spoke briefly about the disposal of tires. Can you elaborate on that? Where, where they would be stored outside? How many would be there? How often the disposal service comes? And then also, could you talk a little bit about outdoor displays? Does the company have any policies or do they stack tires out there with big signs? Can you speak to any of that?
I, I'm, I'm not familiar with outdoor displays of that nature. The, the signage requirements will be part of our site plan review and so everything done in that regard will be in line with Williamsburg's site plan ordinance. So there wouldn't be anything untoward along those lines. For the tires, there's an area in the back that is enclosed where tires would be placed. I don't know how many accumulate before they're taken away or how frequently they're taken away. I'm sorry, I don't have those details, but I can follow up if you would like more information.
Hey, because it withstands reason that if the pile gets too big and it's beyond the enclosure, that the manager would get rid of them.
Yes, sir.
They wouldn't be an eyesore.
Carolyn, ARB approval of this sign, is that, does that come after that? Is there any?
The sign?
Yes.
Yes, sir. This ARB approval usually, for signs usually comes after construction starts. I would also note in the staff's conditions, the outdoor storage of tires is prohibited as one of staff's conditions and that's the first that staff has heard of any outdoor storage of tires. It's been, I understand that tires would be stored inside of the building. There's a special area in the building that they're stored, but they're actually not stored on the outside.
Carolyn knows more about it than I do, so that's my mistake. That information was given to Carolyn by Kim Lee Horn, the engineers, so that would be correct. I'm sorry, they couldn't be here today to make a presentation.
Ms. Murphy, may I follow up on that? I'm looking at the elevations and it looks like there's a, a double trash bay, six-foot high wall, 12 feet across, maybe eight feet deep. Is that simply for other refuse or would that not be for tires?
That's correct. Normally, they have a trash and a recycling, is what we've been told.
Thank you.
And that's the enclosed area I was referring to, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for the applicant?
The data as far as the number of people in the households and vehicles per household, did that include William &amp; Mary students or permanent residents?
I don't know. I don't know what information the Department of Transportation delivers when it's requested information for an area. I should have pointed out, however, in case anyone's concerned, that, that data does not include names, so it's not specific to individuals, it's cumulative data, but I don't know whether it includes students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If anybody else wishes to address counsel on this matter, please come forward.
Sorry for my appearing to be over anxious to get to the party. Mr. Mayor, congratulations and other members of City Council. I'm John Whitley. I live at Skipwith Farms, 110 Governor Berkeley Road. It's just down the neighborhood, down the street from High Prices, Aldi and Discount Tire. My first reaction to this is that I'm so sorry I missed the Planning Commission meeting because I really feel that we can do better. I'm, I'm pleased to see the, the volume of, of sales, but when volume of sales is coming about, that means there's a lot of ingress and egress of vehicular traffic. Concerns me. I have several questions and I'm not certain that they can be answered by the, by the representative here, but I'm wondering, does Discount Tire offer financing? And if they do, what type of rate and what type of circumstances are they offering those to their customers? Secondly, what is Discount Tire's employment plan to assure a diverse workforce? Thirdly, as speaking to Discount Tire being in harmony with the other vehicular types of businesses and restaurants and that, how, what is the consideration of its being in harmony with the new James Blair Middle School? Question, I noted that there would be no alignments. I'm wondering how wheels and tires on vehicles can be installed without the support of alignment services? More questions? Would like for some due consideration to be thought through, that is this the type of building, this type of service that we want on Richmond Road at that prime site? We talk continuously about the beautification of the corridors into our city. Is this what we consider as beautification? Again, let me put this piece in, that I'm, I'm pleased that it will create 10 jobs. I'm pleased that it will help the tax base of our city. I'm not pleased that it has, happens to be a Discount Tire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Anyone else wish to address counsel? With that, we will close the public hearing. Come back to council for discussion and questions.
While this is an excellent application, it takes into consideration the aesthetics of the building, its impact on Richmond Road. I'm interested in the rest of council's impression of the tone this type of use sets for the future redevelopment of other parcels on Richmond Road. A bit concerned that if we go down the path of automotive, industrial, heavy retail on what has traditionally been a tourist service corridor, may change the nature of that stretch of road. I'm unsure how I feel about whether this sets a tone. We probably control that down the road, but I definitely want to see that continue to be a redeveloped tourist corridor, not necessarily automotive services, heavy retail. So interested in everyone else's thoughts.
Well, I share some of Scott's comments. I think that Richmond Road already has some of the same types of businesses there as far as car places and so that precedent has somewhat been set. I think also the Aldis, as a grocery store, which has already been approved, sets more of, of commercial residential drawl as opposed to tourist. Obviously, some tourists will shop in Aldis, but I think it will be more of residential. I do appreciate the fact of Discount Tire wanting to locate in the city because it's important for us to have businesses in the city as opposed to out there. And, and it is a venture that could draw additional residents to that part of Richmond Road and extend their shopping to other retail outlets such as in High Street and area restaurants.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with, with any of those thoughts. You know, I do have some reservations about the change of the feel of that corridor along the lines of Vice Mayor Foster was, was talking. You know, that has traditionally been, at least in our history, the, the tourist corridor where people stayed and ate, that visited Williamsburg and, and changing that, if we continue down a road of more of this service type industry where there, of a tire store, does that change the feel? And then what is the impact of that on future tourism? And so I do have that concern. Could I dream up some other type of business that I would like to see there? You know, sure. But I'm also a believer that, you know, free enterprise works well in America and if I felt that there was something better there, then perhaps I should have bought the land and done something with it. If others in the tourism industry, restaurants or hotels, felt that that was a viable spot to put another restaurant or another hotel or something that supported the tourism industry or that could take, you know, advantage of the tourist, they would have done that. And so, you know, if we wait for something more tourist oriented, the land may sit there, you know, forever. I think we have, in this case, a company that, that's come to town, that wants to make an investment, you know, it's, it's no small investment, I'm sure. They've done a lot of research, they've done their market analysis and they feel that, you know, this is a good spot for them, you know? And in that analysis, they determine that there is a market and that market is probably real. There are a lot of people, a lot of residents that live in around that area. If you, you know, you think of everything from Newtown up Long Hill Road all the way down to Fort Colony, all the Williamsburg residents, it's kind of centrally located and I think the Discount Tire recognizes what Aldis recognizes and that there's a good residential population within that area to support that business. So it's hard for me to say no, just because I, I would, in my mind, like to see something different there. Again, like I say, you know, free enterprise works and, and somebody that's, that, an investor that's come to town and wants to make an investment and I can't think of a good reason to say no.
First, I wanted to just thank Ms. Schweller for answering that question. Just had a phone call a day before and just had a couple of questions in terms of where they've exactly gotten that number and where the market analysis came from. To echo Vice Mayor Foster's comments, I think, you know, he brings a good point where we have to juggle right now with the short term and immediate needs versus kind of the long-term vision we want to see for that tourism corridor. And I think there is, to a certain extent, you have High Street, which is somewhat retail and residential, so it'll serve immediately in terms of a very close distance to what they are looking for, including the Aldis. In terms of long-term, what I like to see, and I think this will be drawn out with the GIOs and with the new comp plan, in the years ahead, is just kind of seeing and revitalizing that Richmond Road as that important tourism corridor that leads to downtown. But I, I think, based on the application, I think it's an excellent application. The applicant has worked very well with ARB from the start and I think I will be supporting this proposal just based on, I think, at this point, kind of servicing what are the needs in the community, but later on, I think, down the road, as we put in more and more of this vision and build it up on Richmond Road, I think that's something we can incorporate later on. I think this precedent is something is, this precedent will be something that we will keep in mind in the future, but as of right now, right in front of us, I think it's a, it's a good application to approve. Thank you.
You're next, Mayor. So I shared some of the concerns about automotive-related businesses on the tourism corridor and then I started to wonder, why, why does automotive have a bad rap? I mean, what's the issue? And when I really think about that, to me, it comes down more to the intensity of the use when it is a service facility, when you have hazardous waste, when you have fluid changes, oil, antifreeze, brake fluid, and what that can do to the environment and it potentially can create an unsightly area. And then I think about this particular application and we're talking about a tire store. So it is not an automotive service facility to me. They do put the tires on and I, I do believe they align them. They don't do any kind of oil change or fluid changes we talked about or brake work or sell batteries, but it's all about tires. So it's a retail store. That's what we have all up and down that corridor. So the question is, would we, is it just we want a different type of retail or would we rather have a restaurant? And then how many times do I hear, well, why do we need another restaurant? You know, and I look around Williamsburg and think, how many tire stores do we have? Is this really overly duplicating what we have in our inventory? And I don't think so. So I come back to Mr. Pons' comment about the, letting the market determine, to some degree, what's going to happen on these sites. Now, we have all sorts of guidelines in place to guide this economic development and in this particular case, this use is allowed in this zoning district, which means we're not saying, no, we don't want it. We just want to overlay a special use permit process on top of it, so we get a little extra level of scrutiny on the application to make sure that the projects that do come through to us, come through of a quality that we expect in Williamsburg. From everything I can see here, the applicant has worked well with the Architectural Review Board and come up with a, a nice design. They're submitting, you know, we saw the landscape plan, although it may not look exactly like that in the end. There's not going to be the external storage of tires on the site, so is it really going to look that much different from another retail outlet? to look that much different from another retail outlet? And I don't, I don't think so. And then when we talk about traffic, it's going to draw a different type of customer in this area who then, when they're getting their tires done, may think about, well, I could go to the grocery store and pick up a few things, or I could go over to the surrounding other retail shops and spend some more money, and take care of several errands at one time. So in a way, to me, it kind of rounds out the offerings in this, as you pointed out, Mr. Pond, this, this central point of a lot of different axes. And I don't know if three and a half million is going to happen, but that's a good number from a retail standpoint. And so, I, I'm inclined to support this as well. So now I throw it back to you.
Sure. And I, I don't disagree with many of the positions taken. The one thing I will caution is, if we do approve this, it means we need to spend, and in the sense I'm getting from counsel, is everyone was just a little bit uncomfortable at some point with this type of use on Richmond Road, and we don't necessarily want it to proliferate. So, it's going to, the onus, if we do approve this, the onus on, is on us for, during continued redevelopment, that it is, that we're doing the things that make Richmond Road align with our vision for that part of town. I, I think that's important, as many of the chain restaurants on that street age, their brands age, it's, it's a corridor we have to continue to pay attention to, because I've, I fear we may lose that grand strand of Williamsburg atmosphere if a few more of these types of retail locations do, do take place there.
And that brings me back to Mr. Zhang's comment about the comprehensive plan and then that next version of that, and how we envision that corridor, and then putting that vision down on paper in a meaningful way that will help guide the development. We do have, if, if I could take the liberty, Mr. Witt, would you mind just coming up? We have benefit of your memo, but would you just share, as an economic development professional, your opinion on this? Wherever you feel more comfortable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of counsel. Happy to elaborate, although all of you have said what's in my memo much more eloquently than, than I did. But really, we looked at, at, at the broad picture here. One of council's goals is redevelopment and, and new development on all our corridors. And this was previously a, an older aged motel that sat vacant, and then was, the property sat vacant for many, many years. So, we had worked with many prospects trying to get redevelopment on this, this property site. So, fulfills that, that goal of, of having a new, modern building, quite attractive building placed there. And then in terms of the retail mix, again, all of you spoke to this, but it provides, it's, it's always good to have a mix and not have all the same retail and restaurants in order to entertain and attract customers to the area. So we feel this new mix will bring people, and, and we think beyond tourists, who may very well use it, and the attorney spoke to that, but also other residents of Greater Williamsburg, who may not normally come down Richmond Road, may come for this new use, and then see all the other things there as well.
Thank you. More discussion? Motion? I sense no eagerness on anybody's part.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of PCR 16-007, Discount Tire request for special use permit with the two conditions outlined, and staff's recommendation.
Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Walton.
Zhang.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to our third public hearing of the day, the Supplemental Appropriation for Sales Tax Fund, Proposed Resolution 16-08. Mr. Sarah?
Mayor Freiling and members of council, in January, city council approved the purchase of the Super 8 motel property located at 1233 Richmond Road, in the amount of $2.45 million. Second amendment to the purchase agreement reduced that purchase price to $2.4 million. The sales tax fund budgets for fiscal year 16 and 17 did not include this purchase due to the unknown closing timeframe related to an environmental site assessment of the property, which was a stipulation required by the city under the purchase agreement. The second amendment requires closing on the purchase by August 22nd. At this point, it's necessary for city council to officially appropriate the funds in the sales tax fund budget, purchase price of $2.4 million, plus demolition and site improvement of $600,000, less the deposit, which was already made last fiscal year, $50,000, for a total of $3 million. And the notice of public hearing was advertised in the Gazette on July 2nd, and Resolution 16, oh, Resolution 16-08 will do this for city.
Thank you, Mr. Sarah. Questions? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing the lack of eagerness out there, we'll close the public hearing and come back to counsel for your discussion.
I'm sorry, can I make one point of order? I just want to clarify again that the purchase price is the 2.4.
Yes, sir.
But the, the overall budget adjustment is for the capital improvement project, and that's the 3 million.
Which includes the demolition and.
And any site improvements after.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
I've been ready to do this since January. It's been, it's been amply discussed. Time for this parcel to change.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Barb, go ahead.
I was just going to agree with Vice Mayor Foster, that having read about the, the project for the past many months, I'm ready for it to go forward also.
Yeah, I think it's, it has been well discussed, and, and the conversation the other day of, of all the properties that the residents have talked about as, as something that, that needs help in, in redeveloping, this, this is that property. And so I think we're really representing the citizens when we make this decision. It is a lot of money, but I think future opportunities will be there that, once it's redeveloped, we'll see the return on that. And I want to also thank the city manager for having the foresight about site development, because I think, forward with other opportunities there on that site, sidewalks and underground wiring potentially, that some, some of that available is a good thing.
Yeah, I echo everything that the council members have said already. And I would also like to thank P. Waltonich and his staff for also making sure that the residents that are staying at the Super 8 right now, made sure that they're, that they are found with a different way to, to safely leave that building. Because I know, from what I understand, there were some egregious, health code, or planning code violations. Just something to catch up to speed with the council members that have been here, what is kind of the timeline of the full kind of moving out, phasing out, and, and the total demolition of, of the, the site? So the people moving out of the motel space and all that?
The, the current owner is required to hand the property free of any tenants. So at, at the closing date, which at this point would be by August 22nd, the city expects to receive a property that's free of tenants.
Okay.
Beyond that, Public Works Department is preparing for the, the demolition of the property and going through that bid and cost, cost process. Economic Development Department is, is prepared to work with the state on a brownfield grant to help recover some of the, the brownfield costs. And Human Services is prepared to assist any residents that, that remain, though initial outreach to the owner indicates that there's a lot of short-term transient right now, much, much like tourists, or, or people spending short, short times rather than residents, unlike earlier this, this year.
Thank you.
So one of the benefits of this effort, though, is that Mr. Waltonich and his team were able to work directly with those occupants of that building who wanted the, the help and create a personalized plan for how they could relocate and move forward. So I mean, I think, in a way, it's turning a possibly negative situation into a positive by getting help to the people who want it. So Peter, as Mr. Zhang said, thank you very much to your team for working that out. You know, it's no secret that as you drive down the Richmond Road corridor, whether it's coming into town or leaving town, this is one of the first and last impressions that our guests get. And I know beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but I don't hear a lot of people arguing about the aesthetic value enhancement the site offers to our tourist corridor. So from that standpoint, removing it will help, simply by, by the removal. But then when we think about the potential for redevelopment of the parcel across the street, which represents the current Williamsburg Shopping Center, and how important that is to this community, and what a simultaneous potential to develop this piece of property, whether it's developed now or down the road, it just makes that Williamsburg Shopping Center redevelopment potential that much more attractive to a potential applicant, and, and perhaps more possible. So I think it's another way the city is, is helping to encourage the sort of redevelopment of the entire area. I know staff has done a tremendous amount of work on this, at all levels, Michelle too, a, a great deal. So, thank you very much for all of that. So unless there's any other comments, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve Proposed Resolution 16-08, Resolution Amending the Sales Tax Fund Budget for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Motion passes. That concludes our public hearings for today, and this takes us to reports. We have the monthly financial statement. Mr. Collins, anything you'd like to point out?
I'm going to be very brief on this, because I know that the finance director's going to follow up in the, the city manager report period and, and talk about the year end. If, if someone looked at a particular month at this point in, in our revenues, you, you would point out that, that April was behind last year's number, and so was May. If, if you will recall where Easter fell at the end of March this year, and there were fewer weekends in April than the previous year, being a dry market during that time of year and the holiday weekend impacts, so you would anticipate that last year's numbers for April be above this year's number. May, in a, once again, in a, in a dry market, if, if you get 11 inches of rain in a, in a record year and rain, then that might impact people's ability to walk around outside and, and enjoy a lot of what Williamsburg has to offer. So that's not surprising. The, the bottom line on the numbers for the year for both room tax and meal taxes, they were above last year's. And of course, sales tax lags by a couple months based on state data, so we'll get that moving forward. But, but you'll hear the full picture from the, the financial for the year this year, which will be good news shortly from finance director. Do you have any questions about the particular month? We'd be happy to help you.
Takes us to monthly departmental operating reports.
Staff is available if you have any questions on what you reviewed.
Seeing none, we'll move on to city manager reports.
The, the first one is the bid award for the Enterprise Resource Planning System, aka our finance system. And with that, I'll let our IT director walk you through that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling, members of council. The city's FY 2017 Capital Improvement Plan calls for the replacement of the city's Enterprise Resource Planning System, otherwise known as an ERP system. This system is responsible for all city financials. It is responsible for the codes compliance system, as well as some parks and rec applications. The existing system's been in place for more than 30 years. During this time, we've made many modifications, many upgrades, and quite a few workarounds to make the system, to improve the system in terms of capability, and so that it could comply with, with changing requirements. Consequently, this system is, is at the end of its useful life, and quite honestly, it's past that. It lacks in many capabilities that are desired by both finance and the codes compliance departments. The new ERP system is proposed to be purchased under a cooperative purchase contract through the National Joint Powers Alliance, or NJPA. State law and Williamsburg's purchasing procedures allow us to take advantage of a competitively bid contract awarded under NJPA. Staff determined the bid awarded to Tyler Technologies to be competitive, and they worked with the company to make the changes in both specifications and needs to fit what , what Williamsburg needed for a contract price of $592,581. And this price reflects the total cost for software and services to install, configure, test, train staff, as well as year one maintenance, and all travel costs. The funding for this application was budgeted in the city's FY 17 and 18 Capital Improvement Plan at $600,000. So the recommendation is that city council award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Tyler Technologies for the purchase of a new Enterprise Resource Planning System for a total purchase price of $592,581. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barham.
Only comment is, Mark, thanks for, thanks for overseeing the transition that hadn't taken place in my lifetime, so. Appreciate your efforts.
Thanks for rubbing that in.
See, we've had four in our lifetime.
I've had two. And I would just like to say thank you, and it's impressive, too, that it's coming in under budget. And as you and I discussed recently in your office, it is important to keep updated, since I just went from my iPhone 3 to an iPhone 5, or 6. And so, thank you for all you've done.
No comment.
I, I would just like to make a comment to thank staff for the great work they've done with the old systems that we had, that probably weren't the best tools at the disposal for them to do their jobs, and yet they've done remarkably well. So, Phil and everybody else who used our old system, thank you very much for that. And, Mr. Barham, thank you for guiding us to this point. You know, as Mr. Collins has told us, he believes this is one of the most important purchases the city will make in some time, because of what it will allow us to do with efficiency, more accurate in our work.
If I may, not, not only Mark, but the sheer amount of finance staff and hours that has to go into research, they'll have to operate two systems during the replacement. So thank, thank them in advance for, for the efforts of the old and the new that they'll have to run, planning and, and codes compliance. It also involves their permitting and the ability to do GIS and spatial analysis using our data. And of course, the city attorney's office for, for reviewing the contract involved. So it was truly a team effort, but thank you, IT.
One more question. Mr. Barham, do you see this having a positive impact on our dashboards and other reporting mechanisms?
Absolutely.
Can you just talk a little bit about that?
The Tyler Technologies, the company that we're going with, they already have application interfaces developed specifically for Socrata. So effectively, this is going to, to, to open the floodgates for data that can flow from the financial system, the codes compliance system, or parks and rec, out to the dashboards and make all of that data available.
I move that city council award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Tyler Technologies for the purchase of a new Enterprise Resource Planning System for a total purchase price of $592,581.
Second.
Ms. Walton.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mr. Collins, come back to you.
Okay, and, and I will quickly hand it back off to our finance director to go through the year end financial report presentation.
I'm going to go through a series of slides to recap the operations on a cash basis with the operating fund and the capital projects fund. So we'll talk about budget to actual numbers on a cash basis, and then talk about some accruals that need to be adjusting the numbers over the next two months. We'll go over the trend graph to show you what's happening with, with revenues and expenditures since 2006, and talk a little bit about fund balance and reserves. On a cash basis, we had $35 million came in compared to $34.5 million budgeted overall. So we were under, we were over budget on revenues by about $483,000. And the, these types of categories, general property taxes, we were over budget because of real estate taxes, other local taxes, business license came in about $118,000 overall, above budget, bank stock taxes were about $81,000 above budget, and room and meal were about $400,000. $460,000 above budget. Of course, these don't include the accruals that we're going to be adding in during the next two months, so some of those numbers will be even higher. Licenses and permits were high because of increased plumbing, mechanical, and erosion and sediment control permits being issued. Fines, fines were down. Parking Enforcement Division had staffing challenges this year with a very sick family member, and they've since made staffing changes, and they'll be beefing up the way they're patrolling from here on out. But yeah, the parking plans are down for the year. Use of money in property was $52,000 over budget. Community building came in higher than budget. Prince George Park and Garage revenues were considerably up, about $19,000 for the year. And charges for services were about right on with what was budgeted. Miscellaneous, just to kind of highlight that the EMS recovery fees at this point are about $50,000 over budget, and we still need to accrue one more month. So a lot of the revenues are coming in higher than budget this year, which is a good thing. Intergovernmental at this point is down, because we still need to accrue some of the state revenues. These are some of the revenue accruals that we'll be making during July and August. Sales tax for education money will be coming in from the state, probably around $50,000. Utility taxes, probably at least $130,000. Another month of EMS fees, probably $40,000, and then other, conservatively, about $100,000. So we should be accruing at least $320,000 additional revenues for fiscal year 2016. And then on the expenditures side, again, this is cash basis, out of the $34.5 million budgeted for expenditures, we spent just under $33 million. We were about $1,005,000 under budget on expenditures. So the general government, that's the various administrative departments, well under budget, as was the courthouse under judicial. Public safety, which includes police, fire, and jails, almost a half million under budget on a cash basis. Public works, which includes engineering, streets, landscapes, stormwater, still under budget. And Parks, Rec, and Cultural, Recreation Administration and programs were well under budget. Community development was under, because that's the WADMAC money that still has yet to be given to WADMAC for the June activity that we'll receive in July. Then, looking at it a different way, this is what we're kind of more used to looking at, salaries and benefits and operating and capital. That's how all of the 1,200 line items are divvied up. But as far as salaries and benefits, these salary and benefit savings are due to attrition and turnover, vacant positions, things like that. They do add up, and to the tune of over half a million dollars this year. Most of the savings was in fire, recreation, administration, police, there's a vacant position at the shop, and Clerk of Council still has the vacant position. So that's the savings on the salary and benefits side. On the operating side, this is where most of the line items are in the Operating Fund. Still need to give WADMAC their money that we collect, that'll be coming in this month for June. Courthouse still needs one more payment to be made for the June activity. Recreation and police and fire, this is where most of the savings were, in those major departments, recreation, police, and fire. A little bit of jail savings, but there still needs to be payments sent over there. And we didn't spend the whole personnel contingency we had budgeted this current year. And then the last category is the capital side. This is the equipment that doesn't qualify to be put in the sales tax fund, it's in the Operating Fund, but those savings, mostly in recreation, fire, and streets, for those equipment-type purchases. And we're going to need to accrue more expenditures. We need the jail, $130,000 probably will come in for the jail. WADMAC money will come in, we're estimating about $110,000 more to be given to them. And we're estimating about $550,000 other operating costs, conservatively. And then we'll have to accrue four days of payroll. So it looks like we're going to be adding about $960,000 in more expenditures as we make the accruals over July and August. And when you put this all together, taking in the revenue collected on a cash basis plus the accruals, we would have about $35.3 million in revenues, and then adding in accruals on the expense side would make expenditures total about $33.9 million. So I'm estimating about $1,004,000 surplus for the year. And that equates to about 3.9 percent, that's surplus numbers, about 3.9 percent of operating revenues for the year. That's a little higher than we've had in recent years, but we have consistently had those surpluses, as we'll show you with this next graph. This is something that we put in the budget document, you've seen this many times, especially the two new council members. I'll explain it a little more in depth this time for you. But the revenues on this graph are the green line, expenditures are in red, and slotted line is the adopted budget. The gap between the red and green are obviously the surplus for the year. But the chart shows a few things. It shows surpluses generated in the Operating Fund back to 2006. And the trend in surpluses have been generated mostly from underspending, on the underspending side, especially since 2009, when the city cut back on spending because of the economic downturn. Surplus for fiscal year 2016, that just ended, has revenues contributing more to the surplus than expenditures, which hopefully is a good trend. I'll also point out that revenues are now just starting to outpace those from the highs of fiscal year 2008, which included the summer of 2007 celebration. All the operating fund surpluses contribute to the Capital Project Spending Plan through fund balance, along with the 1% sales taxes that have been designated for CIP by council for many, many years. So the average operating surplus represented by the timeframe on this graph averages about $1.7 million surplus each year. So along all these savings adding up, along with the money that's, the 1% money that comes to the sales tax fund adds up to fund the five-year capital plan, which right now is $34 million. So it's, this is what adds to the 1% money to fund the capital improvement program. And then the capital projects themselves, I believe we're going to hit about $5.8 million in revenues for this year, and that includes the grant money. Most of the grant money we're going to receive this year is street repaving money, a little bit for this building from the Library Foundation. And that would compare with the projects that we spent this year. We spent $10.6 million so far at the end of June, and we're going to accrue probably another half a million dollars. But we'll spend about $11.1 million this year. Obviously, the Strikers Center is one of the bigger costs that we finished paying for this year, and we did some major repaving around town. As you can see, this is one of the big years of repaving, a lot of money was spent on that. Proper demolitions, IT upgrades, vehicle replacement plan, school capital projects, and then of course, the debt servicing. So that's where the major expenditures in the capital projects were this fiscal year. And this, starting out the fiscal year, back before '16 began, at the end of '15, city had $35.9 million in total fund balance, broken down by these four categories. So if we take that, if we're starting this year with that, add in all the revenues for the operating and the capital of $41.16 million, and then take away all the expenditures that I've just gone through, looks like we'll end up with a fund balance of about $32 million. So that's in line with where we've been over the last five years. That would be broken out by this, this is how we break it out in the financials in the audit report. Nonspendable, that's the three hotel properties that the city owns right now, that would not change, will be for '17, we'd of course be adding the Super 8 property. But we would be reporting $1,009,000 in nonspendable. And then we'll break down the residual. We've, last several years, we put 35% of the remainder, well, 35% of the fund balance in reserve, because that's our reserve policy, 35% of revenues. So we would put that in the unassigned category and put all the residual in the assigned. So that $17.7 million would be available, along with the stream of 1% revenues and future grant monies, to fund the five-year capital plan, which currently, right now, is $34 million over a five-year period. Okay, and the financial audit schedule, we're going to work during the next two months to accrue all revenues expenditures. The auditors will be out the week of September 19th to really get into the nitty-gritty of what they do when they go over our financials. The draft statements will be provided to the Finance and Audit Committee members, of which Mayor Freiling will be the chair this year. We'll review those with them during November, and we'll actually meet with the Audit Committee and the auditors together at a meeting in the first week of December, and then present the full financial statement to City Council at the December 8 council meeting. So that's what I have here. It's been a very good year, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Phil. Just to make a comment, you know, we're in a great financial position while still doing progressive, somewhat expensive things like purchasing properties for redevelopment, and just a testament to the city's continued strong financial position, and thank you for all your good guidance and management.
We have a very good, strong staff in finance and all the other departments, very, very concerned about what they spend, and we don't take it lightly.
Very good. Thank you.
I would just like to echo my thank you.
You know, as you look at this, and you can't help but be proud of the city of Williamsburg and all the people and the businesses in it that helped generate this revenue, that keep us in a financial position to make such large capital expenditures relative to our budget. As Sarah said, you know, you can drive around town and see all the streetscape changes that have been made, go to our fire department, and you can see the new equipment, our police Our community is well-served by the businesses and their own taxpaying, you know. You talk about revenues, and a lot of that comes from increased assessment and new buildings. So I think we, you know, we are a very fortunate community, and it's reflective in this, and so I just wanted to make that point, and thank the staff for keeping an eye on the ball, watching the pennies, because the dollars will follow.
Just want to echo my thank you as well. This is a very encouraging report, so please send regards to your staff and yourself as well. I think generally, we take so much for granted that we have such a strong financial position, and that can't be said for any other locality. And I think, to echo what Vice Mayor Foster said, the fact that we are in such a strong financial position, and still able to invest in a lot of capital improvements for our citizens, I think that's very well-served for our community. So thank you.
One point I'd just like to make, and I think it was the, you don't have to go back to the slide, but one of the first slides talked about how, on the revenue side, we were down in fines, and so that we'll be catching back up on that. And I just want to emphasize that the reason we have fines is not to generate revenue, it's to discourage certain types of behavior. But when we know that revenue's coming in, we have to budget for it. So we're not going to beef up the staff just to create a stronger stream of revenue, we're going to beef up the staff to do what the guidelines are to put those fines in place, and that will result in additional revenue. So I just want to be clear on that. Going to Mr. Foster's point, and others, about some of the significant capital expenditures that we've undertaken, whether it's the purchasing of properties, or this building that we're sitting in now, or the equipment that we have for police and fire, or the new finance or enterprise resource planning system that we have, ERP, those are all investments in this community's future. Those are all expenditures that are going to pay dividends to us over the long term, whether it's through more efficiency in the operation of our city staff and the government, or whether it's creating the environment that encourages more new businesses to come here, or it helps the existing businesses succeed more because we're able to draw more visitors to this community, or whether it's creating a more beautiful cityscape that becomes aesthetically pleasing and an additional lure for guests, and enhancing all along the way the quality of the life of people who live here. All of this comes together in a very important way. So I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're all excited about spending money. That's not what this is about. It's really, what are the key things that we can do today that are going to pay dividends to Williamsburg in the future and make a difference to the people who live here? And I believe you said we're very fortunate? Fortunate doesn't happen by accident. It happens by a lot of hard work. So thanks to everybody on city staff for making all of this possible.
It's 195 people that made it happen, including all of you.
Thank you. Back to you again, Mr. Collins?
Yes, and the last.
Full of reports today.
Want to make sure that your first meeting with the new council is very productive for the citizens.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. The next is a request of the staff and the Economic Development Authority to revise the demolition loan program and establish, in its lieu, a demolition grant program. If council will recall, one of the goals, initiative, and outcomes strategic plan policies set by council is for staff to review the business incentive programs available to the city. This is one program that staff did review and came up with a revision based on experience with the past loan program, and our Economic Development Director's going to present their hard work and efforts in the recommendation of the EDA.
Thank you, Marvin, and Mr. Mayor and City Council. Good to be here today. As Marvin mentioned, we always, as staff, look at cities' goals and initiatives that y'all do every two years. In addition to looking at making sure our incentive programs are in place, we also know that redevelopment is a big part of our goals as a city here, and this demolition program has played a big part in that. So in 2007, the Economic Development Authority came to you to request some funding to start a demolition loan program, and that program has gone very, very well. Six projects have used that program and resulted in $80 of private investment for every dollar that was spent on those forgivable loans. It was set up as a loan, so that the money was granted to the property owner to help pay for the demolition of the underutilized property on the site, and then when redevelopment occurred, the taxes that property owner paid on the new building and structures offset the loan. So it was forgiven based on the new taxes that the property owner paid on the new project. So again, as a way to incentivize the private sector to come in and redevelop and invest in our city. So six of those projects have happened, as of this month, four have been paid off based on taxes, so we still have two we're working with. So the program has worked very, very well. But we had seen a lull in the program, and analyzing it, realized that it worked very, very well when a property owner wanted to redevelop his own property. But we have many property owners who hold underutilized properties who want to sell the property to a redeveloper. They're just not interested in that redevelopment aspect. And doing this as a loan was an obstacle to them. We require a deed of trust on the property to ensure that the loan is paid off, or a letter of credit. So both of those were obstacles to people who really needed to sell the property in order to get private investment to come in. So we developed a new program that we think is needed at this point, and it's a grant program. And we are setting it up so that the EDA doesn't pay 100% of the program, but they can pay up to 90% of a demolition cost on a targeted redevelopment property. So the way we are going to, the EDA will look at projects and see how much to spend. They can spend between a zero and 90% of the cost of the demolition of the property, still requiring the property owner to pay at least 10% of the cost. Is we will look back to City Council's goals and initiatives and rate each project on how many of those goals and initiatives it meets. And then secondly, we'll also look at the projected tax revenue and use on the property if they know that for the redevelopment. If they know that and they have some contracts in hand or letters of intent, that will even strengthen their application in the eyes of the EDA. So that's the skeleton, or the concept of the program. The EDA did adopt that program in June with hopes that City Council would fund it. So we have two things going on today. One is there's a memorandum of understanding between the city of Williamsburg and its Economic Development Authority. Economic Development Authority. You've done this many times before, when you've funded Economic Development Authority projects, grant programs. This says that the EDA will use these funds for this program, and if any are remaining, they'll be given back to the city, I believe, in 2021? Yes, 2021. So you've given us some years to do that. So our request today is for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to start the program. We estimate we should get two large projects that we're aware of wanting to take advantage of this to use the program in this fiscal year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I can add one thing on the money side. It's not new money. I try and find savings or within the existing budget or within the coming-year budget, and Phil and staff helped with that. So in our fiscal year 2017 capital budget, there's a capital project for the parking terrace maintenance and rehabilitation. There was also a line that was carried over from last year's budget for that same project. At the time of creating the capital budget and adopting the budget, we hadn't received the bids for the parking terrace project. Recall, it came in at, I believe, approximately a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and we had two-hundred thousand in last year's budget, so we did not need the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we allocated in 2017. So a hundred and fifty thousand of the two-hundred-and-fifty would just be transferring the money from the project where it's not needed at the parking terrace to the EDA. The other one-hundred thousand is in savings from other projects from fiscal year sixteen, instead of carrying them over into reserves, just taking those savings from last year and allocating them specifically for this. There's no change to next year's capital budget, other than the transfer to the EDA. You're not taking away from any existing allocated projects to do this.
Questions for Ms. DeWitt?
So let's talk about the relationship between a property owner and a potential developer of that property once it was sold. Do you anticipate this to be used by the existing property owner to go ahead and demolish, or to go to developer and say, hey, buy my property, this grant money's out there for you once you own it?
Great question. So the program is written and anticipated to be used in the former way, that the current owner of the property would demolish the property, and then it becomes much more attractive to a redeveloper to purchase it. It also meets other of our goals by getting underutilized property torn down. It provides a better visual aspect on that corridor that doesn't have to wait for the sale of the property.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a follow-up. If a current owner wants to take advantage of this program to demolish a property and redevelop themselves, they could do that?
Yes, sir.
Does the same program exist for that? Does the former program exist for that owner of the loan, or has this completely replaced that?
We are, the EDA has decided to completely replace the old program. Everyone who's in the old program will continue to move through their ten years of forgivable loans under the old program, but this would totally replace that as a new program.
And it could be applied in either circumstance, depending on what the property owner wants to accomplish. Is there any money remaining in the EDA's demolition loan program?
Yes, there is.
And will that be added to this as part of the demolition grant program?
That will be used, can be used for this program as well.
What's the current balance?
I'll have to check on that.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make one more comment, if I may. Just a few moments ago, we made the decision to allocate the funding to purchase another hotel property. What we're hoping this program will do is enable the private sector to demolish some of these underutilized buildings on their own and limit the need, need might be a strong word, but limit the need for council to step in and buy as many properties, that we can let the market handle these transitions and redevelopment with a little bit of help to get the demolition out of the way and to make the property more appealing for purchase and redevelopment. And I think this is a much better way to leverage those dollars. If the demolition loan program is any indicator of what that investment will return in private investment, then we should be very well-suited to adopt this.
And, you know, let's just face it, it's been a tough period of time over the last ten years to get, you know, owners to come in and redevelop their property on their own, particularly on our entrance corridors, tourism corridors, and you kind of repeat what you've already said, but if this is that incentive that's going to carry over, you know, this piece of property, whatever property it is, to redevelopment, then we've served that purpose. And I think it's a much smarter way to invest money versus trying to buy a piece of property and putting it on the market. It keeps the current, you know, if an applicant, if the city buys a property, then it comes off the tax rolls, and we don't want that to happen as much as we have been doing it. So this is, I think, is a win-win in a lot of ways, so.
It's a much cheaper way of doing it.
Smarter.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that City Council approve the transfer of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to the Williamsburg Economic Development Authority to implement the new demolition grant program, subject to the attached memorandum of understanding between the city and the EDA.
Seconded.
And if you could also add to that motion, the authorization for the city manager to execute the MOU?
And the authorization for the city manager to execute the MOU.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Tsang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Ms. DeWitt, I hope you'll pass along our thanks and appreciation to the members of the Economic Development Authority for all the work they've done with the loan program and establishment of the grant program.
Will do. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, we'll come back to you again.
And I will hand it off to the city engineer, Aaron Small, to give some good news and request action on future repaving.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, the State of Good Repair Program was created by the Commonwealth for paving of local streets, repairing bridges, and other stuff. But it wasn't expected to start until fiscal year twenty-one. However, due to positive revenues at the Commonwealth, they were able to start the program beginning next year. So what they decided to do is go ahead and set this up along the same lines as the primary extension money funding program, which, as you may recall, we received six-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars in funding last year to pave Richmond Road, which has now been completed. What the State of Good Repair money will be used for is going to follow along the same lines of primary extension. It'll be for particularly primary roads, that is, those roads with a number designation higher than six hundred, or less than six hundred, I should say, and as well as those that have a pavement condition index, less than sixty, which means they're showing deteriorated condition, cracks, and other such wear. Generally, they don't reach that level until after about ten or fifteen years, but that highly is variable depending on traffic. We had six streets, street segments within the city that met the criteria, and so we applied for funding on all of those streets. Selection of those streets for the funding is made based on a complicated formula that takes into account traffic, the level of the condition, so that the worst streets that take the most highest traffic are the ones first funded. Four of our streets did receive funding, including Bypass Road, Page Street, Lafayette Street, and Henry Street. And these are only portions of each one of these streets, and I could answer those limits if you need me to clarify. The total funding awarded for that was five-hundred-and-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. So the resolution before you today is to authorize the city manager to accept those funds so that we can continue the agreements and get these streets paved, starting in our spring paving schedule next year.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Questions from council? I do have one question, and I'm not going to direct it at you, I'll point it at Mr. Collins, and I don't know that anybody in this room can answer it. How does this jive with the news of budget shortfalls for the Commonwealth, and how is there additional money to start a program early when we're not meeting the projected revenues that the state was anticipating?
I believe it has more to do with the transportation bill, and it's positive revenues on the transportation side, which includes the extra sales tax that add-on for our area in Northern Virginia, but other programs within the Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
I would also add that the federal government passing Surface Transportation Act last session would also impact the funds available at the state level, and therefore, higher-order roads would receive, and programs would receive additional federal funding, which may displace state funding to be more available for these projects.
Mr. Small, if you could just share with appropriate people, although I'm still getting used to a little bit the new traffic patterns and striping on Richmond Road, the way that project was executed with the repaving and then the complicated restriping, with, to me, minimal impact compared to other projects I've seen in the region that were much less complicated, I think says a lot about the work that staff did with the contractor and the contractor's efforts to do work at the right times to get it done. Just one person's opinion, but thank you.
I believe that a former planning director and current public works director spent a lot of time out there in the street measuring and marking, so one of them heard you.
I have a feeling the other one's listening. He's watching.
Go by watching.
Other comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move council approve Resolution sixteen-dash-eleven to accept the funds and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out the State of Good Repair program.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Tsang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Collins?
I'm going to join staff for the presentation, Tamela. So the title slide says Northeast Triangle. And I'm not sure that anybody wants to go to directional state, or I want to go to northeast anything, so consider that a holding pattern for a name at this time to be determined later, but a culinary arts district in the area that's currently called the Northeast Triangle. And I'll lead off with policy direction that council's given staff in the past that have guided staff up to this point for a presentation. I would also mention that this is a presentation that's directed by council to start off a process, to start off a conversation in the community and through your appointed boards, rather than any decision point today. It's a presenting of a concept and an idea that several months down the line will come back to potentially as decision points. So we're at the top of the funnel on this program. Location that we're talking about, it runs basically from the Colonial Williamsburg Visitor Center up through Capitol Landing Road, Second Street, down Page Street, the southern boundary, approximately being the railroad tracks. So that's the area that's loosely called Northeast Triangle. One thing looking at this area is Williamsburg is a drive market for tourism. When people are driving here, traditionally, they're on Interstate sixty-four. The traffic council will come up later in the conversation. But when staff was looking at where to invest staff time for redevelopment, this became, from a location standpoint, a good place to start. It's the commercial corridors that we're talking about between I-64 and the traffic, and the draws within the city being the College and Colonial Williamsburg and the historic area. Now, you may also notice that if you work to the east, you would also have Bus Gardens and the Water Park. If you look to the west, you have Waller Mill, you have some of the culinary arts along Moretown Road in York County and that area as well. So from a location standpoint, this is a very central area of the city. It's also close to our transit center near here and the government center. There's already bus lines that work through this area of the city. Colonial Williamsburg has its bus and transit connection and pedestrian connections back to the historic area, so there's already some infrastructure to move people within this area and around this area. In addition, a point that's often missed in a conversation and opportunity for the city is that there's a National Park Service unit that runs right through this area and has a road in Parkway Drive that can be accessed either east or west to bring people into this district off of the Colonial National Historic Park. The overarching goal that's driving staff on this from the GIOs is from Goal One, talking about community character, Initiative D, Northeast Triangle. And that GIO initiative stemmed from a community planning effort in the past, from the Northeast Triangle Focus Group. That led to implementation within the comprehensive plan of some goals within this area, and some specific recommendations of how to proceed. But looking at the location from a pedestrian improvement standpoint, as well as supporting our existing business within the area, and looking at how to encourage further redevelopment in the area, especially with craft beverages like Copper Fox Distillery from an old hotel site that the city had purchased and then sold back for that use. I'm not going to read all of your past goals and objectives, but when we started evaluating all of the GIOs and what would apply to this area, there's a very extensive list of goals that this touches, from the obvious redevelopment, and how do you incentivize that redevelopment? How are we promoting tourism economy and generating revenues along that line versus property? How are we creating place within our community? How are we generating a community that's more walkable and of interest to the outside consumer? All of this plays in to this entry corridor. With that, I will get out of the way and let you talk to planners and economic developers for a while.
Okay, I'm going to start off by talking about the Northeast Triangle Focus Group. This group was formed by City Council in December 2010 from the adopted biennial goals, initiatives, and outcomes. Seven members were appointed. Sarah Stafford and Mika Shohan were co-chairs, along with Ed Richardson, Bobby Bland, Jim Bennett, Tori Guzman, and Sharon Cardwell. City staff included were Michelle DeWitt, Economic Development Director, Reed Nester, Planning Director, and myself. The group's charge was to prepare a vision statement by the end of 2011 for use in the city's comprehensive plan update, which paints a narrative and a graphic picture of expectations and recommendations for the future of the Northeast Triangle Focus Area, including future land use designations, relations to surrounding areas in the city and outside the city, transportation connections, design expectations for corridors and open space, economic development and business opportunities, redevelopment priorities and architectural character, character and scale of housing and neighborhoods, community life and recreational opportunities. The focus group met monthly, except for July, held four public meetings in March, April, May, and November, and presented the final report to City Council in January of 2012. The first sentence of the vision statement states, "Our vision for the Northeast Triangle recognizes that this is a-" recognizes that this is a diverse section of the city of Williamsburg with both residential neighborhoods and commercial districts that offer opportunity for new development and redevelopment." Their recommendations were, and that's where the slide comes into play, planning and zoning issues. The existing land use and zoning designations are generally acceptable. Residential uses should stay residential and commercial areas should stay commercial. Revised a setback and buffer requirements for the section of Second Street between Page Street and Parkway Drive to encourage redevelopment, which was done in May 2013. Investigate commercial floor area required for mixed-use developments, and should apartments and townhomes be considered instead of just condominiums? In 2013, that was changed to allow apartment condos and townhouses, but the 67-33% ratio was kept. That existing residential densities were appropriate, and existing architectural review districts and design guidelines were appropriate. Infrastructure improvements. They recommended that a consultant be hired to analyze these specific proposals and to develop a master plan for streetscape and related improvements to enhance the community character of the focus area. This report should be similar in scope and detail to the Route 60 corridor report. Specific improvements recommended were underground wiring of Second Street, which is scheduled for 2017, Page Street, which is completed, and Capital Landing Road. The Capital Landing Road recommendation was with a focus on removing the cross-street service lines. They also recommended streetscape improvements for street lighting and directional signage, proposals for landscape improvements on both public and private property, sidewalk improvements on Bypass Road, Parkway Drive, Peniman Road, and Merrimack Trail, bike lane improvements to Capital Landing Road and Parkway Drive, and to develop a strategy for creating a park at Queens Creek. This slide is the existing land uses, and what it shows is hotels, you have 13 in this area of the 35 in the city, three B&amp;Bs of the 22 in the city, 11 restaurants out of the 99 in the city, and one of the craft beverages uses out of two in the city, and also has the visitor center and conference center. This area also has, the slide shows, 15 vacant commercial properties with six of them currently for sale. This is a slide that talks about the average daily traffic on this end of town. We'll start at the top, which shows 18,000 from the Camp Perry exit from I-64. Route 32 from Merrimack Trail is 800, which is interesting because it's almost a split with that on from Merrimack Trail down to Capital Landing Road of 8900. Capital Landing Road from Merrimack Trail to Bypass Road, 6600. Merrimack Trail to the York County line of 6800. Bypass Road of 14,000. And from Page Street from Capital Landing Road to Second Street, 20,000. And Page Street from Second Street to York Street of 13,000. And Second Street between 12,000 and 13,000. And lastly, Peniman Road from Page Street to the York County line of 2700. Recent developments in the area are Capital Landing Nursery, shops at Second Street, Copper Fox Distillery, and Second Street Bistro. And just across the city line in York County is the Virginia Beer Company. This is my last slide, is the idea to create a new zoning district along the current B-2 section of Capital Landing Road for a culinary arts and hospitality district to encourage visitation to the Northeast Triangle. This district would allow by right such uses as hotels, motels, restaurants, microbrewery, micro-distillery, micro-cidery, brew pubs, schools for the culinary arts, retail studios for workshops of artists and artisans, and food trucks. Food trucks would be allowed if they are owned and/or operated or in partnership with an owner and/or operator of a licensed restaurant located in the city. This district is recommended to remove uses that are not compatible to the culinary arts and hospitality uses, such as automobile sales and service uses and many storage warehouses, and allows uses by rights such as microbreweries, cideries, distilleries, which currently require special use permit to encourage their location into this area. And with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle DeWitt to go over economic development.
Thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Mayor and members of council, good to be here again today. I'm going to talk about three areas that we want to conceptually mention to you that we see as, in addition to the zoning changes, that we see the city can use to move forward in this corridor or in this section of the city. The easiest thing to do, we always turn to the planning department and the zoning ordinance first when we're trying to encourage certain uses, and Carolyn has covered that. But we know this area of town has not had as much private investment as we would like, as you've seen from the slides that Carolyn has showed you. So when we talk about economic development incentives, we always ask, what is the city's role? And here, the private sector has not been investing where we think there's opportunity. So we see the city's role, like most economic development programs, as a short-term spark to encourage that private development that will hopefully take off on its own after that. So I'm going to cover a couple ways to do that, and then a streetscape design. So here are the three tools we're thinking about in addition to changing the zoning ordinance. One would be to create a tourism zone for the area to target businesses that attract customers. A streetscape design, as the task force mentioned back in 2010 and 11. And then a landscape and facade matching grant. And I'm just going to quickly talk about each of those.
Ms. DeWitt, can I just make one clarification?
Mm-hmm.
We've talked about the Northeast Triangle, we've talked about Capital Landing Road, we've talked about Second Street, but right now, when you say this area, you're talking just about that section of Capital Landing Road that was in your prior slide?
I'm actually talking about the entire area north of the railroad tracks. It includes, and this is the slide that will show that, that includes the visitor center, Second Street, Merrimack Trail, and the Capital Landing Road corridor.
Just wanted to make sure.
So, good, great clarification, because the zoning that Carolyn was talking about was just for Capital Landing Road. But for the tourism zone, we're speaking about this whole area of the city that was also the area the task force looked at. So the tourism zone, these are the details. It's allowed by the state code, much like we were allowed to do in arts district, to offer incentives to attract certain businesses to this area. You do this through an ordinance. Qualifying businesses should attract visitors from outside the locality to come spend money inside the locality. And then, if you have a tourism zone, there's this Great Gap financing program that the state offers, where they will pledge part of the sales tax they collect on a project in addition to the 1% that the city or the locality collects on sales of a project to provide gap funding for a financing of a project of up to 20%, and then the developer pays another 10%, 30%. But again, we'll get into those details as we move forward. So here's the area for the tourism zone, and again, we're looking at attracting the businesses that we mentioned that would attract customers from outside the area. There's many ways to do this. The incentives we would offer would be very similar to what we do in the arts district. Those taxes we collect are BEPole tax, sales tax, room and meal tax. Those are great taxes to rebate, the sales tax and the room and meals tax, because your customers pay those taxes, and so getting those back is an added benefit, and waiving permit and zoning fees. So again, the areas where the city can be effective in rewarding businesses to locate there. All of this, much like the arts district, would be based on new tax revenue. Existing businesses would be eligible on any increased tax revenue they're providing through growth in sales and customers. But all of this is based on forgiving parts of new revenue, not giving up existing revenue. That's an important economic development concept. The second tool we mentioned was design, and this does just apply to the Capital Landing Road area, much like the zoning did. Looking at doing a streetscape plan for Capital Landing Road, much like was done on York Street, and there's a photo of the York Street project that was finished last fiscal year. That was one element, and then a second would be the design of a signalized intersection at bypassing Capital Landing Roads. That was an area that the task force felt needed quite a bit of attention, and a signalized intersection tends to be very helpful for economic development prospecting. And then lastly, a landscape and facade grant. The EDA has been talking about this for several years. This would be, and this is done in many, many communities across the nation and throughout Virginia. It's set up as a matching grant, where the business pays for half the cost of improvements, and the EDA would pay for the other half. There'd be a cap per business. It's, again, to try to reward people for investing, as the design plan that I spoke about in the prior slide would say the city's vision is. We want certain design, look, and feel. As the private sector wants to react and do that, we would pay half the cost. And some examples are painting, public art, landscaping, windows, awnings, different things that existing businesses can do. These are always set up as short-term programs, again, trying to spark that private investment where it's not there. So we would have it with a sunset to encourage people to use it immediately and to jumpstart other interest in beautification of the corridor. Back to Mr. Collins.
We've talked about land use, we've talked about economic development and private investment, and then, of course, there's the public investment side of it. A lot of any land use also involves the public right-of-ways, and what do they look like, what do they feel like? What is the above-ground wiring? So part of this is just to remind council that we have a rather significant capital improvement project within this that's funded for this current fiscal year. It's the underground wiring program on Second Street. That's between $1.5 million and $2 million in the budget. Also, with the Capital Landing Road improvements, right now, there's funding for a capital landing, or Northeast, I'm sorry, Northeast Triangle redevelopment plan, within the reallocation of capital funds by council in fiscal year 16. There's carrying over planning monies of $150,000 for that project. As you've heard in the planning, in reviewing the plan, the community-based plan that already happened, there's some pretty specific implementation points. Rather than getting into a very broad-based community planning effort, when we've already heard community input in a couple of different efforts, it's staff's recommendation at this point to take part of that $150,000 and apply it towards the actual design plan. And so, that would allow a capital landing road improvement design to be done, and work with the community more in a design-specific planning effort than a future visioning land use planning effort. It just changes a little bit the tone of what was presented before. That's where staff's thoughts are as they looked further into past efforts. Some ideas of what that may include within those improvement plans. I would point out that the past planning effort specified the design plan for Capital Landing as opposed to the other streets. Not that the others aren't deserving or don't need it, they just weren't mentioned in the last planning effort, and I'm trying to stick within existing policy and documents with what we're bringing. The others could be brought up in the GIO process this fall, so that it's more inclusive to the entire area moving forward. It also includes design for the traffic signal installation at Second Street Parkway Drive. Both of those could be accomplished within that funding that's already been set aside. The other project that is funded is in the residential area on Parkway Drive, and it's a sidewalk segment to complete sidewalk from one end of Parkway to the other. Okay, so, next steps moving forward. Day of presentation, get the thoughts out in the public, if you will. Let you hear them first as council, of course. But the planning and land use would require rezoning and tax amendment process. That'll take several months to work through. Your planning commission, it'll have public hearing, opportunities for public input. They'll take their time and make sure that they review it and give you a recommendation prior to it coming back to council for decision in the October-November framework. We'd like, though, the economic development evaluation and development, the ordinance would not take that long. We'll time it out to where you get one packet. So it's a project packet, and you can consider it all at one time as council in that October-November timeframe. With the infrastructure, it would just be an update to the capital improvement plan for that design work. We can discuss through that going into your retreat and time it out also with your decision process on the other two items. That, staff is available, it's a lot of information in a short period of time in a long meeting. It's meant to be a conversation starter rather than an endpoint.
Mr. Mayor. Start the conversation.
All right, I'll pick out a few specific things. Carolyn, you talked about, particularly on Cap Landing Road, showing our intent for that area with some byright uses. I like the way that sounds, because it really kind of puts it out there, what we intend that's to become. Do you know anything about other jurisdictions and how they've used that, particularly targeting microbreweries, you know, the craft beverage industry?
We're looking at those, and we're looking at the York County, and we're also looking at York County, they're doing food trucks, and James City is looking into food trucks and those kinds of things. So we're looking at all of that to develop a proposal to take to planning commission.
Good deal. I've just noticed municipalities like Norfolk and Richmond have little nucleuses of craft beverages kind of all over town, and I'd be curious to know what byright zoning was in, or is currently in those areas. It's really, particularly in Richmond, it's taken several parts of town that didn't have an identity or had a previous identity and created a new one, and I think that's a really great tool for Cap Landing Road.
Well, that's what I thought we were looking at, and to encourage that, if you'll do it byright rather than a special use permit, the private sector is more likely to come into that area.
And I like that we would almost be able to advertise that. Come here and do this byright, you know? It makes it easy on that potential business owner.
If you do that with the tourism zone, where you're able to do some time period of revenue going back, it also provides the incentive for the capital investment in the zone as well. Sunset that, so they're able to recapture a percentage of their investment in the area, and then the city residents will be able to benefit by the increase in beverage tax revenue consistent with council policy.
All right, this one's for Marvin. I think it's the second-to-last slide. Capital Landing Road improvements, there's one that's on, I mean, excuse me, the third bullet, traffic signal installation at Second Street and Parkway Drive, and then the Capital Landing Road improvements. Which of these, other than the underground wiring on Capital Landing Road, is even on the CIP horizon?
2020 currently, there is the design money for the intersection, Capital Landing and Bypass.
Okay, so, these are the type of things, as we reevaluate our CIP in six, nine months, we can reevaluate based on these options and new direction for this part of town.
The Capital Landing improvements being part of the plan were incorporated into comp plan goals, but they haven't been put, they haven't made the move yet from comp plan into capital improvement. What this initiative would be to push up the design work, there can be a conversation about, do we want to fund elements? How do we fund elements? Do we want to do the whole thing? What time period? Right now, we haven't, have a grasp of what that end cost is. The design would help us take that step.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did we have a proffer at some point on the Parkway Drive/Second Street signalization based upon need for one of the other projects in the area? Was it Blue Green?
I recall, Blue Green, part of their...
And so, that would not even necessarily come out? Would it come out of, was that prepaid, or was that something that would be paid at the time the signalization was needed?
Project. Basically, the final site plan was never...
Basically, the final site plan was never finalized. It got approved by everybody, but they didn't file through with the final drawing. So it's sitting in our office with no final site plan on it.
So was the final site plan what would have triggered that?
Right.
So without that, they're under no obligation?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the signalization is based on traffic counts, if I remember right. Mr. Clayton on Second Street and Parkway Drive, so.
Yeah. At this point, we didn't, it doesn't meet any of the warrants for traffic signal, but the blue-green project would have tipped the scale for that, so it would have been put in with that project.
Just then to make a broad comment. We spent a lot of time since I've been on council that, talking about Capital Landing Road in very general terms, this is really putting specifics in place, and it's exciting. I know this is going to be a working, it's a work in progress. We're going to learn more as we go along about what's actually going to spur development and redevelopment. So I just commend you all for your work on this, and particularly the focus on specifics and things available for us to do.
Thank you again for your work in pulling this together, but I have a question about existing businesses in the area that do not fit the district concept and goal. What are the thoughts for them? Just, I mean, do we...
The new district was basically cut around just Capital Landing Road for that very reason. We didn't want to run it down Second Street because Second Street has the automobile uses and those other kind of uses. So the thought was, if we do a new zoning district on Capital Landing Road and those uses aren't there now, that we could create a culinary arts and hospitality district and still leave the other uses that are on Second Street be still in the B2 district. So they'll still be there by, under the B2 zoning ordinance, but this would be a whole new zoning classification we would probably call B4.
But wouldn't the businesses on Second Street fall under the Northeast Triangle whole area? And I missed that.
Well, it's in the Northeast Triangle area, but it's not in the...
Rezoning district.
In that zoning district. So they're still in the same zoning, same uses, nothing's changed. Nothing changes in the residential. Nothing changes for existing businesses on Capital Landing. The conversation earlier about how do we start the conversation on Richmond Road and transition from a car-centric design to some other concept moving forward, this is a conversation that's happening here. On Richmond Road, the market responds in a manner consistent with the existing comp plan. The use requests in this district vary from the policy goals of council as they are now. So this is honing in the uses to what you want long-term, it's transitioning the district. It doesn't require any existing businesses to do it.
Can I step in here? I think this comes back to my question when Ms. DeWitt was speaking. It gets a little confusing because we're talking about different areas in the same conversation, same bigger conversation. But the B4 rezoning that we talked about was only for that section of Capital Landing Road between Parkway Drive and up to the DMV.
Merrimack Trail, basically.
Merrimack Trail, right.
That's correct.
But when we talk about the tourism zone, we talked about the entire Northeast Triangle being part of the tourism zone.
Right.
So it's two different concepts on two different zones, although one of the zones is a subset of the other.
Right.
And we're not talking about any other overlay. It's just those two.
The tourism zone allows for specific businesses to receive incentives to develop there. Businesses that are not tourist-based businesses would not be eligible to receive incentives there. They could still locate if they were allowed to use within the... Mr. Foster just mentioned that there's been a lot of discussion about this. In my time on boards and commissions, we've had two studies and, you know, 15 years of conversations about how to generate some interest in redevelopment in Northeast Triangle. So I think what we finally done, one of the challenges we've always had, I believe, is traffic, and there are enough people in there to support investment. And that's what we hear from the local businesses there. And so, you know, how do we make that a designation for people to want to go to it? Not just depend on people coming off the interstate and driving through it, but how do we get other locals to want to travel there? And so I think, you know, across town to get to this destination. And I think what staff has done is, you know, talked about, you know, the policy, the planning, and development. Now we have some tools in place to help incentivize local entrepreneurs or outside investments to come in and put their money in behind what we're doing as a municipality. And so I think, you know, this is a step in the right direction. I like the aggressive, and that's not the right term, but given what we've done over the last 15 years to be at the top of the funnel, to Mr. Collins' point, you know, I think we're really in a great spot to really show the businesses over there that the city's going to be a partner in trying to make that area better for them and then overall better for everybody in the community. Right direction.
Just had a broad comment and also a quick question to follow up with that. I think this is generally very exciting to see, and just want to commend staff on all levels for putting this up and presenting this today. In particular, from the economic development side, kind of generally excited to see how, the fact that there are the tourism zones, landscape grant, facade grants, and there are a lot of neighboring localities nearby Williamsburg that have been incorporating these as ways to redevelop and to spur private investment in the area. And I think one thing that I wanted to remark is that Capital Landing Road, just speaking with people around that area, you know, it's one corridor that personally I thought, you know, should have some sort of, whether it's traffic count or kind of some response to it, and we haven't seen that despite it being really close to, you know, I-64 and leaning it towards colonial Williamsburg from that side. So I'm excited to see where this kind of really comes to be. And I think it's an appropriate part from what, echoing what Ms. DeWitt said, I think this is an appropriate space for the city to get involved, generally because the market hasn't really responded to that particular corridor. And this is just speaking about Capital Landing Road. Just a quick question for Ms. DeWitt. Just reading the slide, the next steps for the evaluation and development of the tourism zone and landscape grant. I know different localities incorporate different ways to evaluate and develop whether this is an appropriate use. And I guess it'll be discussed further with council, but just kind of give general overview of what will kind of go into this evaluation and eventual development before, as we carry this conversation forward.
Great question, because I think we're all very familiar with how the Planning Commission serves council in the city in that way, in vetting and analyzing and providing recommendations to city council. We plan to use the Economic Development Authority in the same way. So Economic Development Authority in my office, our relationships with the businesses out there, help with the city attorney, looking at other jurisdictions with you're very, very familiar with who have done this, would work through a recommendation package from the Economic Development Authority that would come forward to council at the same time the Planning Commission sends its recommendation.
Great. Thank you.
Is that it? One thing that jumped out at me on these slides, other than a lot of interesting ideas that were shared, was that traffic count on Page Street. And I think it's almost all residential right there, and there's nothing we can do about that. But it's interesting that that's the highest volume of traffic of any stretch in that area. But as we think about this Northeast Triangle and the concept that you came up in the very first slide about the culinary arts district or culinary arts and hospitality district, it strikes me that if we really want to have the sense of place that one would expect a culinary arts district to evoke, that requires a much more identifiable pedestrian environment. We do not have that on Capital Landing Road. We do not have that on Second Street. And I understand that some of the capital investments that are suggested here involve crosswalks and maybe some of the intersection work, but it's a lot more than that. When you look at those roads, either one of them, they tell the pedestrian, these roads are designed for cars. They're not for people. They're to get people from one place somewhere else to another place somewhere else, and that generates a lot of traffic coming through. It's not about how can you safely navigate from one side of the street to the other and then back again so that you're parking one place and not constantly moving your car around. And when I think about areas that are successful in this concept, that's what they have. So I think we have to think more about just the crosswalks, but what do we do to traffic flow on those streets so that we don't discourage cars from coming through? Because as Mr. Pond said, we want the volume, but we want the volume in the right way. And we want to make it, we just want to make it easier for people on foot. And that brings up one point, or maybe, in addition to the side-to-side on Capital Landing Road and Second Street, is that access point across Lafayette Street where Capital Landing Road comes into becoming, I guess it's Waller Street? That's a critical entry point from the downtown area and the entire historic area and this whole side of town to get to that part of the community that we want people to be able to walk to. And I know there are challenges Mr. Clayton's brought up with putting crosswalks in there, but we've got to figure something out if we really want people to walk to this place. And if we don't, I don't see how it's going to work. So to me, that's one of the more critical elements of this, that isn't going to be hugely expensive, but it's going to have a lot of impact. The other thing, I wanted to go back to Mr. Foster's comment about the success that Richmond and Norfolk have had in the microbrewery environment. And I think a lot of that has to do with the same challenge we faced in the arts district. They have the type of building that lends itself to redevelopment as a brewery, so you're not having to engage in new construction to build something or to build a business. We don't have those buildings. So somebody coming into this area who's going to want to put in a microbrewery or a micro cidery, maybe another micro-distillery, unless there's another Lord Paget there waiting to be redeveloped, it's going to be a real challenge for them not to have to build an entirely new structure. So I think we have to understand that that's going to be an obstacle to entry for some of these people. And as we think about the incentives, I know we've got these development, redevelopment incentives, how do we make those work the best in that environment if that's the business that we want to develop?
That's true. Very true.
That's all I have. I'm sure we'll be talking a lot more, and maybe right now.
To piggyback off Paul's point about being pedestrian-friendly, often walk the dog to a recently opened establishment just outside the city limits that also uses city water to produce its product. And the difficulty in creating a pedestrian-friendly environment in that corridor is we have to coordinate with another locality. There's a, you can tell when you leave the city by the quality of the sidewalk and the cleanliness of the sidewalk. It's so important, and as we move forward in this process, to see what we can do to get our neighbor jurisdiction in that area to cooperate and see that it's in their best interest to make similar coordinated improvements. Because, you know, no one, even most residents of Williamsburg, don't realize that they're leaving the city and crossing into New York County when they're on Second Street, so.
In defense, at times of our neighboring jurisdictions, when you get into the road right-of-ways and the pedestrian features within, they're not always the maintenance authority within that area, as much as they may want to do more. And if I can also go back to Councilwoman Ramsey, I might have, a different way to respond to the existing business is that if it's an existing business that is a tourism-related business, and they had additional phases of improvements, or if they wanted to take an old design and redevelop their property to a newer design, then this gives existing businesses an incentive, as well as new businesses, the incentive to participate and redevelop their property. So there's a benefit to both existing and new businesses within the corridor. Look forward to the discussion. I brought up the, when we're talking about that design and pedestrian scale, you know, the actual money for design work, we'd be looking at this cross-section for the rezoning district on Capital Landing, because that's the area that was identified within the plan. You know, one thing stands out to me as a former planner, there are a lot of travel options around this. So there's a question of, if this is an effort to create place, place does involve that pedestrian ability to cross and a visual connection to the next use or desired place you want to go to. And if that involves empty spaces or blank walls or unsafe road crossings, the pedestrian chooses not to participate. So that would be a conversation I anticipate with the design, to look at the actual road cross-section. Maybe not all achievable in one project or one time, but that can be part of a phased discussion within the corridor.
A larger plan that's implemented over time.
Right. This is about, this is about creating a place generationally. Council has had foresight to look forward and think about the next generation of use within districts, and this is, some of our corridors are in that generational change right now. So we're being a little bolder looking forward. Ms. Pons, thank you. We're being a little more aggressive, because it's time to do that for these areas. So thank you for your time on this.
Thank you. Give you a moment to get back to your seat before we come back to you for the next city manager report.
Thank you. Verify. Last item on my part of the agenda. It's a resolution for the First Amendment to the Restated Cooperative Service Agreement to establish installment payments by members for the Virginia Peninsula Regional Jail The regional jail board at its last meeting and in previous meeting discussed that just the cash flow of the regional jail. Its four members are the city of Pecosin, the city of Williamsburg, James City County, and York County. The board membership are those chief administrative officers, as well as the sheriffs for the two jurisdictions, and Supervisor McGlynn. We provide the board oversight for the operation of the jail. And one thing that we've noticed at this point is, due to the nature of state funding and the unknown number of inmates that may come and go and require services from the jail, cash flow can be a challenge for that type of facility. And so this just changes that cash flow from paying the month after for services rendered. And we know the amount of installment each month, that it'll be a bi-monthly in advance payment. It doesn't change the amount we have to pay in a given year. It just changes when we have to pay it, and this is updating the bylaws, if you will, the cooperative service agreement to reflect that agreement of all members. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. If you have any fiscal questions, the finance director's also reviewed it.
No questions.
Mr. Sarah, do you see any particular impact on the city's cash flow from this?
It's very minimal.
Thank you.
It's a matter of timing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve and authorize the city manager to sign the resolution for the First Amendment to Restated Cooperative Service Agreement, providing for the financing, construction, and operation of the Virginia Peninsula Regional Jail.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Motion passes. Takes us to city attorney reports.
Nothing today.
I know you're sad about that.
Well, we'll present the legislative update next month, but this agenda was fairly lengthy, so we opted to put that off till next month.
Thank you.
We have scheduled meetings for July of 2016. Mr. Collins, anything you want to point out?
Not at this time.
Seeing no unfinished business, takes us to new business, appointments to boards and commissions.
Do this first?
Sure.
All right. Remove that effective immediately, city council reappoint Reginald Davis to the Social Services Advisory Board for a four-year term expiring June 30, 2020, and appoint Susan Gennaro to the Social Services Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Edna Baker, expiring June 30, 2017, and appoint Larry Snyder, Barbara Banks, Jim Ramage, Mark Rath, Christine Wagner, and Deborah Cheesebro to the local emergency... Wagner and Deborah Cheesebro to the Local Emergency Planning Committee for three-year terms to expire June 30th, 2019 and reappoint Susan, Susan Galvin, Dave Slowey, Peter Wallantish, William, Pat Dent, Debbie Middlebrook, W. Stephen Cummings, Todd Cannon, Kenton Towner and Randy Hare for three-year terms to expire June 30th, 2019. Also move that effective immediately, city council reappoint Peter Wallantish to the Colonial Group Home Commission for a four-year term expiring June 30th, 2020, the Colonial Behavioral Health Board for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2019, the Community Action Agency for a five-year term expiring June 30th, 2021, and the Old Town Medical Center, Center Board for a two-year term expiring June 30th, 2018. And additionally, effective August 1st, 2016, I move that city council adopt Resolution 16 dash 09, reappointing William Austin Jr. to the Quarter Path Community Development Authority for a four-year term to expire July 31st, 2020. I'll second the motion.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
And if council will indulge me, I will make the following appointments to various committees, boards, council liaisons. These are all to commence immediately and expire June 30, 2018. Doug Pons to the Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance Board and the School Liaison Committee, Mr. Scott Foster to Virginians for High Speed Rail Board, the Williamsburg Destination Marketing Committee and the Williamsburg Economic Development Authority, Ms. Barbara Ramsey to the School Liaison Committee, the Cultural Alliance of Hampton Roads and the Local Emergency Planning Committee and Mr. Benny Zhang to the Greater Peninsula Workforce Development Consortium and Old Town Medical Center. And I don't believe that requires a vote, does it? That's our last business for today, that takes us to open forum. Anybody wishing to address council on any issue, please come forward. Seeing none and believing there is no closed session, I'll take a motion to adjourn, if I may, one more thing. I should have said at the beginning, I just want to welcome Ms. Ramsey, Mr. Zhang. It's not their first council meeting, we already had that on July 1st, but it's their first regular council meeting and just want to say welcome, it's a pleasure to have you with us and we look forward to the next two years serving with you.
Thank you.
Now, take that motion.
I'll take, move to adjourn. Second.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.